It's right on the corner. You're almost up.
We're on. Good evening. In these extraordinary times, I'd like to welcome you to the December fourteenth meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals and my last meeting after twenty-eight years. Tracy, take it away.
Appeal twenty twenty-three dash zero five seven, BOP A Realty Incorporated, thirteen fifty-two, East Main Street, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred dash eighty-four dash four dash thirty-seven point three, Business Center Zoning, Proposed Directory Sign. Applicant requests variances and/or relief from Chapter three oh one dash two four nine C four, where proposed front sign setback six point six six feet, where minimum allowed is fifteen feet, and Chapter three oh one dash two four nine E six, where proposed aggregate area one oh six point two square feet, where maximum allowed is sixty square feet.
Who's up?
Mr. Barnes, um?
If you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, don't think about the truth, so help you God.
I do.
State your name, your address, please.
Hello, Board. My name is Arthur Rast, architect. I reside at one eighteen School Street, apartment three in Lindenhurst, New York. I'm from Soluski Architects, representing the client or the property owner. First of all, I do want to say, Mr. McQuarren, thank you for your service and, you know, good luck in whatever you do moving forward. So, the site, if you're not aware, is the original Edward Sporting Goods store from back in the day. Twenty nineteen, our office actually did the renovation to make it, to subdivide it into multiple tenant spaces, make it a little bit more of a usable property since the owner wanted to retire and whatnot, you know how things go. Currently, it is now Plaza Fifty-Eight LLC. And so during the planning process, this project was approved under Resolution twenty nineteen dash one oh nine. The original plans had called for the original Edwards sign to remain, with the intent that we would, once we got the approvals and everything was done, we'd come back and modify the sign in place since it was pre-existing and unconforming. During construction, it got demolished accidentally, so it was never intended for that to happen, but stuff happens sometimes. And so because of that, what I did was, I basically, in my submission, showed, luckily on Google Maps, they still showed the existing sign still, so you can kind of see where it was. It was basically right on the sidewalk, so it was already kind of like right there and kind of almost in the public way in some sense. So again, so with this submission, we're looking to get a relief, you know, for the setbacks for the new sign. I'd like to note that the new sign is more conforming than the original sign, so considering the fact that if you were to look at the plan, you'll see that the setbacks in this front yard that we have basically makes it impossible for us to even have a sign other than something that's on the building itself. The tenants have expressed concerns that because there isn't a sign on the street like every other property within the area, including the iconic plaza, the dental office next door, and the adjacent from that commercial use, they all have freestanding signs that all don't meet the current zoning code, yet they still have them and their businesses are able to get more exposure.
Exposure.
Exactly.
Let me interrupt you. Is you finding aware the signs that are there now, the banana signs, they're not allowed?
Say again.
The signs that are there now, they're more towards the curve, they call them banana signs, anyone says barber shop or something like that, they're not allowed. See where it is?
I don't think they were, but again, because they're in a desperate situation, they're just doing what they can to try and, in the meantime, while this-
Is you aware that that's not allowed?
I don't believe so, no.
Will you make them aware?
Yes, I will.
All right.
One thing I do want to note with this is although the sign that we have proposed is one hundred and six square feet, which is larger than sixty that's allowed, since then I didn't have time to update a more current drawing to the board, but I did, we did try to reduce the size of the sign by a little bit, and I do actually have a copy, if I can distribute to you, of a revision because once the owner had seen the location of the sign, they expressed that they wanted it somewhere else than where we show currently. So I just want to, on my drawing, it basically shows where the one that you currently have proposed on your drawings is, and I think I actually want to make- Sorry. Yeah, these are all good. Okay, so. Five. Here you go. Yes, I do. I should have given that to you first, anyway. There you go. So we would like to move it to a different location. It would still be, it would still not be conforming to the code, but again, considering the extenuating circumstances and how we'd need a variance regardless, we figure if we're going to go for the sign, we'd rather have it in a location that the owner would actually like. Location would be less closer to the corner itself, and it would be more directly adjacent to the building, between the building and Route Fifty-Eight. And what we did initially, and then we have no problem working with the size of the sign, changing the massing up to make it a little bit more, you know, conforming, but I did, we did reduce the width of the sign by one foot, which is a reduction of about nine feet from what, nine square feet of what it is currently, so it makes it about ninety square feet or so.
Who decided that this was the best site, this new site? Who decided that, from you guys?
That was my initial decision, but I think also Ike Israel, who is the, kind of the owner's property representative, he also had expressed a similar location that they would have liked to have. I should also note, if you don't mind, that the two pillars that are on the side, from what I can determine, that was also considered part of the square footage for the sign. When we originally had kind of developed the design and whatnot, we didn't really think of that being part of the square footage, so if we were to remove those, maybe make them more of just a simple post, that could also reduce the size of the square footage of the sign too and make it even more acceptable.
So with this revised plan, what is the total aggregate area of the sign?
So from my calculations-
With the pillars as depicted?
With the pillars as depicted. The aggregate would be about ninety-seven square feet.
And if you were able to remove those pillars or make those posts instead, what could you reduce that to?
So let's see. They are eight feet tall and about two feet wide, so sixteen, thirty, you figure you're not going to remove all of it, so it would be thirty-six square feet is what those pillars are now. So figure if you were to reduce them, I mean, you'd probably knock that down to maybe-
Sixty-one.
Yeah, probably. I mean, it'd be about, if you go from thirty-six to-
Take your time.
Ten square feet, maybe.
Okay.
So it would definitely reduce the massing, it would make it a little bit less of a, you know, eyesore in that sense. The reason why we'd gone with the pillars is they kind of matched the brick aesthetic and whatnot with the building, with the new design, though if we did do the posts, that could probably lend to the architectural metal paneling that we have in the building as well, so that could be a different complement as opposed to doing the brick piers.
Boils.
I'm good.
Good. Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Anyone on Zoom? Nobody's Zooming here, so let's have a vote.
Okay.
It's a reading.
All right, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, I move that the appeal of Papa Realty, Inc., thirteen fifty-two East Main Street, Riverhead, SCTM Number six hundred dash eight four dash four dash thirty-seven point three, Business Center, B.C. zoning, for variances and/or relief from Chapter three zero one dash two four nine C subdivision four, where proposed front sign setback sixty-six, I'm sorry, six point six six feet, where minimum allowed is fifteen feet, and Chapter three zero one dash two four nine E, like in Edward six, where proposed aggregate area of one hundred and six point two square feet, where maximum allowed is sixty square feet. Be approved subject to removal of all signs presently existing in violation of the code, commonly known as banana signs, in accordance with the applications and sketches you mentioned amendments.
Correct.
Amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zeweski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your appeal has been approved and best of luck with everything.
I appreciate everything, Board. Thank you.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you.
I, he's not appeared yet, so. He's out fishing. He's making a disappearance.
Appeal twenty twenty-three dash zero five nine, Jessica and Ivan Santiago, ninety-six Washington Avenue, Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred dash ninety dash two dash forty-three, RB forty zoning, proposed addition, conversion of attached garage and addition for new garage, porch, and mudroom. Applicant requests variances and/or relief from Chapter three oh one dash seventeen. Proposed side yard setback is nine point six feet. Minimum required is twenty-five.
Okay. If you kindly, yes, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, don't think about the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Just state your name and your address, please.
Lisa Boyer, Twin Forks Permits, two eight eight East Montauk Highway, Hampton Bays, New York, one one nine four six. I'm just submitting photographs for the record of the property in question, specifically the residence that's on the property right of the moment. The lot is sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty-three square feet. The relief has been requested from Section three oh one dash seventeen for proposed side yard setback at nine point six feet, where twenty-five feet is required, to allow the construction of a new attached garage to the residence. The owners are looking to convert the existing garage into a family room and then to construct a small mudroom area as well as a covered porch area in front of the existing garage, and then located directly on the north side of the residence or the existing garage right now would be a new garage, and that would meet the nine point six foot setback. So Photograph one shows the west elevation in front of the residence, as seen from Washington Avenue. You can see that there's detached garage right now. Again, that's going to be converted into the family room. Photograph two is the same view from Washington Avenue, but it shows the neighboring property to the north, and that's going to be the property which is most affected. As you can see right now, the existing house on that neighboring property to the north has a side yard setback somewhere between ten to twelve feet. It's hard to measure, but it's somewhere in that range as per Google Earth. Photographs three and four show the lot arrangement along Conic Bay Boulevard. As you can see that the house is really situated with the front yard towards Washington Avenue, and it makes the most sense for us, an addition, to convert the already constructed garage into habitable space instead of trying to do an addition on the backside of the house, which would then also require variance as well. So the applicant is requesting just a single side yard setback. The C of O is issued for the property, for the house, April twenty-seventh, nineteen eighty-eight, and it was zoned a D residence. So I believe that the grant of the variance will not cause an undesirable change in the neighborhood inasmuch as it's a residential neighborhood, it's a residential house, it will be continued to be used as a residence. Can the benefits sought be achieved by any other method? The requested variances cannot be achieved by any other method. The fact that the lot is an undersized lot, it's about forty-one percent of the required zoning. The lot width is one hundred and thirty-five feet, where one hundred and fifty feet is required. Will the variances sought be substantial? We believe that the variances requested are the minimum necessary for a new attached garage to the residence. And will the grant of variances have an adverse effect on environmental conditions or the neighborhood? No, the requested variances are common addition to an existing residence, and there are no adjacent wetlands or other unique environmental features. And the applicant is requesting these variances in order to, as I said, construct additional living area for their residence. Any other questions from the board?
What's the makeup of the garages? Is it a two-story, a single-story?
It's a single-story with a peaked roof, so it will be very similar in character as to the existing elevation. I have some plans that are not the best printout, but it's just a, I can submit these if you want.
Small attic area?
It'll be a small attic, correct. So it'll mimic the, just the standard little peak. And it'll kind of be a one and a half story look, just similar as to what the existing garage is right now.
Is there anyone else to be heard on this matter? Anyone on Zoom? Gentlemen, anybody have any questions?
Nope.
No.
Very nice presentation. Let's have a vote. Who's got the reading?
Okay, Mr. Chairman. With respect to appeal number twenty twenty-three dash oh five nine, I move that the appeal, Jessica and Ivan Santiago, ninety-six Washington Avenue, Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred dash ninety dash two dash forty-three, which is in Residence B forty, RB forty zoning, for variances and/or relief from Chapter three oh one dash seventeen, where the proposed side yard setback is nine point six feet and minimum required is twenty-five feet. Be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zeweski.
Aye.
And I vote, vote aye. So two weeks from now, go to the town clerk and take it from there.
Thank you. Happy Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Appeal twenty twenty-three dash zero six zero, Amanda Farmature, eighty-six Park Road, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred dash sixteen dash three dash three point one, Residence A forty, RB forty zoning, proposed two-lot subdivision on merger. Applicant requests variances to and/or relief from Chapter three oh one dash eleven, where resultant impervious surface of Lot one will be nineteen point six percent. Maximum permitted is fifteen percent. Chapter three oh one dash eleven, where proposed width of Lot one is one hundred and twenty feet, minimum required is one hundred and fifty feet. Chapter three oh one dash eleven, where proposed width of Lot two is one hundred and twenty feet, minimum required is one hundred and fifty feet. Chapter three oh one dash eleven, where proposed area of Lot one is twelve thousand square feet, minimum required is forty thousand square feet. Chapter three oh one dash eleven, where proposed area of Lot two is twelve thousand square feet, minimum required is forty thousand square feet. And Chapter three oh one dash nine A one D, where shed under one hundred and forty-four square feet on Lot two has a rear setback of four point six inches, I mean, I'm sorry, four point six feet, minimum required is five feet.
And if you kindly raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, don't think about the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name and your address.
Amanda Farmature, hence married, last name is Grams, G R A M S, eighty-six Park Road, Riverhead, New York. I sought this variance out ten years ago, and it was approved, and I went to planning, and I didn't think there was a time limit, so as years gone by, and the purchase of a Pine Barrens credit, which set me back an awful lot, I am here today to continue and finally put this to bed.
Okay. Board, anybody have any questions?
I think there's a couple of issues you wanted to bring up.
Yeah. So on the plan, it showed a hot tub and a deck.
Oh, no, that's my home. We're not talking about that property. We're talking about the other property. It's being subdivided to, oh, you want to know about my property? Okay, fine.
Correct.
I see your area.
There was no certificate of occupancy submitted for those. Did you obtain a certificate of occupancy for those?
For the hot tub?
And the deck.
The deck is, oh, I already have that with the building department. That's been there for ten years, fifteen years.
Well, there was no certificate of occupancy submitted as part of the application, and you submit all the COs that exist on the property.
Even, okay, so my home as well, where I reside, not the other piece. You want my certificate of occupancy for the hot-
Yeah, well-
I didn't real, I didn't realize that.
You're submitting an application for un-merger.
Yes.
The Zoning Board of Appeals certainly doesn't want to grant relief if there's violations and lack of certificate of occupancy for other improvements that are on the property.
Understood.
In addition, when you un-merge the lots, what you're creating is a situation where you have a principal dwelling unit on one lot and an accessory structure on the second. Pursuant to the town code, you can't have an accessory structure-
Yes.
-without a principal structure. Therefore, if the ZBA is so inclined, there would be a condition and a time limitation as to when you make application for a principal dwelling unit on that second lot. In addition, you currently have a seasonal accessory apartment. That seasonal accessory apartment would have to be extinguished because Lot two now technically is in violation of the code without a principal dwelling, so you can't have simply an accessory structure and rent that out as a accessory structure because under the accessory apartment law, you have to marry the two uses.
Yes. Matt in Planning told me, once this is approved here, that the building department would grant it prior to the official, I guess, splitting of the property, where it would be said that this is no longer going to be an accessory, it's its own residence standing alone.
The garage?
It's not a garage, it's a cottage.
Okay, well, that remains to be seen. Until that time, that, you know, that's converted-
It has heat, it has air conditioning and heating, it has-
Okay, well, with all due respect-
Sure.
-you were granted a seasonal accessory apartment permit because at the time you were granted that, you did not have air conditioning or heat.
Correct, correct.
So that structure is not a valid residential structure, so the accessory apartment use would have to be extinguished.
Okay.
Whether or not you are successful in legalizing that accessory structure into a principal use, that's another application process, and, you know, you're going to have to undergo that.
Never was made aware of this.
Well-
I'm sorry.
Well, you're obviously here, and you just stated that you made improvements-
Let's adjourn.
-that were not authorized by prior permit. That's why you were granted a seasonal accessory apartment permit.
Ma'am, we're kind of inclined to, like, adjourn this until you get this stuff done?
Yeah, it sounds like it.
See the guy behind you.
I'm sorry?
Never mind. See the guy behind you.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so.
We're going to adjourn you for the next meeting.
Which is January eleventh.
With January eleventh.
March.
Oh, March twenty-eighth. Respectfully, we're going to adjourn this to March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, that meeting?
That should give you enough time to work with building staff, planning staff, and myself to actually walk you through the process and determine whether or not you can even legalize that structure with your goal.
Then why did I buy the Pine Barrens credit for eighty thousand dollars?
Well, that issue was not presently, isn't before the ZBA. I will certainly look into that for you, but I don't know if that was germane to converting-
Yes.
-an accessory structure into a residence.
No, it was, it was told to me through the health department, until you, you had to do that first. You had to do that in order to even propose splitting this property, which, by the way-
Okay, exactly.
Back in the day-
The Pine Barrens credit was not related to the structure issues. It was related to creating two lots and having the sanitary density to create two lots and two residences. Every resident, residence that you put on a piece of property has a sanitary load, so that's why the Pine Baron credit, it, it's really honestly unrelated to the issues we're trying to address.
Right, I get it, I get it. Is there, is, may I see you at your office in order to start this process?
Absolutely, a hundred percent.
Because I, I was told something else, I, you know, and I was led a different path.
Okay, I absolutely, absolutely, I'll work with you with planning and building, so we're all together and everybody's on the same page. If you accomplish it sooner, you can get back on the agenda sooner.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give you enough time to put all the pieces together, so when you do come back in, potentially, it's an approvable application.
Thank you. I appreciate all your help in the matter.
Okay.
I'll call your office tomorrow.
Sure.
Thank you.
That's what we're here for. Help you out as best we can. Anyway, let's have a motion to move this on.
Respectfully, I'm going to adjourn this till March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, or sooner if we can get it in.
So moved. Second.
All right. Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zeweski.
Aye.
Mr. Gillo.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So sorry we couldn't help you tonight, but our attorney will help you, okay? Get this thing straightened out. Thank you very much. Next up.
Appeal twenty twenty-three dash zero six one, Bruce and Janet Drummond, ninety-three Point Street, South Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred dash ninety-two dash two dash twenty-eight, Residence B forty, RB forty zoning, proposed two-story addition, balcony, and covered porch. Applicant requests variances and/or relief from Chapter three oh one dash seventeen, where proposed side street setback is sixteen point two feet, minimum permitted is fifty feet. Chapter three oh one dash seventeen, where proposed combined side yard setback is twenty-five point eight feet, minimum permitted is fifty-five feet, and Chapter three oh one dash seventeen, where proposed impervious surface is thirty-two percent, maximum allowed is fifteen percent.
And if you can't bet, you're ahead of me. You swear to tell the truth, don't think about the truth, so help you God.
Yes, sir.
State your name and your address.
Wayne Smith, twenty-one Page Lane, Maritzes, New York. Island Green Contracted. I'm here with my clients, Bruce and Janet Drummond. We are, good evening, guys. We are seeking side yard abutting, second street relief and approval of a footprint addition of approximately forty-five square feet of habitable space with a two- addition of approximately forty-five square feet of habitable space with a two-hundred-square-foot porch with roof over, balcony above at main entry. I do have a few pictures of neighboring properties of bucolic Jamesport.
Certainly bring them up.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody had an apple.
Okay, off you go.
Real short and simple, the addition needed to the existing footprint is to enlarge the first-floor master suite in order to accommodate handicap usage. The covered porch relief that we're seeking keeps the spirit of the original home and in continuity with the historical South Jamesport neighboring properties. That's all I got.
Well, that's concise. Gentlemen, any questions?
No.
No, just be certain, you're gonna put a complete second story on this as well, right?
There is, that's, the only addition that's gonna be to the footprint is that covered porch area, so the second story stays within the existing footprint of this, correct?
Anyone out here to be heard on this matter? Jeff Zahn, is this anything of interest to you? I guess not. Okay, nobody else wants to hear?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, with respect to Appeal number twenty twenty-three dash zero six one, I move that the appeal of Bruce and Janet Drummond, ninety-three Point Street, South Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred dash ninety-two dash two dash twenty-eight, which is in Residence B forty, RB forty zoning, for variances and/or relief from Chapter three oh one dash seventeen, where proposed side street setback is sixteen point two foot, minimum permitted is fifty foot. Chapter three oh one seventeen, where proposed combined side yard setback is twenty-eight, twenty-five point eight foot, and minimum permitted is fifty-five foot. And Chapter three oh one seventeen, where proposed impervious surface is thirty-two percent, and maximum allowed is fifteen percent, be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with the amendments thereto, if any, as filed by, with the building inspector.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zeweski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, best of luck with everything.
Thank you, guys.
Enjoy your new mission.
Thank you, guys.
Appeal twenty twenty-three dash zero five four, Big D Incorporated, eight twelve West Main Street, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred dash one twenty-four dash three dash thirteen, iconic river community zoning, proposed accessory commercial kitchen within residence. Applicant requests variances and/or relief from Chapter three oh one dash two twenty-two B, where residential structure to be used partially for a commercial baking kitchen as accessory to the existing Maple Tree barbecue. Space not open to the public, no indoor or outdoor dining, and no direct marketing or sales, and limited to supplement next-door restaurant.
Good evening, Mr. Cuddy, it's always a pleasure to see you.
Well, it's always my pleasure too, but I'll get the microphone so you can hear me, which is always helpful. I have with me Mr. O'Leary, who is the owner and operator of the Maple Tree barbecue, and this essentially is part of his building. This is, you may recall that in last January and February, you granted us a special exception so that we could have the upstairs of the building as residence and the downstairs as storage. We went to get a CO for the building, and the building inspector was unhappy because there are, in the back of the residential unit, there are stoves, and there are a couple of wall stoves, and they're sparingly used, so he wanted us to come back to this board to point out to you that the change really is not just the residence upstairs, but it's the storage for half the site, maybe two-thirds of it, and one-third kitchen. But the kitchen, as Tracy just announced, is a very minimal kitchen. It's not open to the public, there's no dining there, there's no sales, it really supplements the barbecue site, and he occasionally bakes there, but virtually, there's no food that's being there and moved over to the other site. This is something that he tests and works on, but doesn't use it as essentially the kitchen for the barbecue. We can't get the CO unless we can get you to change the special exception that will allow us to have both storage and the kitchen use on this very limited basis, and it's extremely limited. There's no impact on anybody, and it doesn't affect any neighbor, it doesn't affect the operation of the barbecue. It's been like this for a while. I didn't realize when we came here that it was used basically in that fashion. I thought it was used very sparingly, and it is used sparingly, but I didn't think it was necessary to say that there was a kitchen which was there. I mean, this is the kitchen that was there for the house, and we added two stoves to it. So, we're looking to have the board allow us to get a CO so we can use the upstairs, and to use the downstairs essentially with those two uses, the storage and the kitchen, on the basis that the kitchen, as we say, is not used for dining, there's no sales to come out of it, there's maybe some minimum baking that goes on, but that's all. And again, my client is here, and he'd be pleased to answer any questions that you have.
Oh, I think it's pretty clear as far as what you're doing, so... Chairman?
I have no problem with it, that's a shame.
Anybody in the audience?
Is there anyone to be heard on this matter? Anyone on Zoom? As always, Mr. Cuddy, you represent the right people, and you do the right thing. So, let's have a vote.
I've been very fortunate to represent the right people.
So, did you make application to Suffolk County Health Department?
No, we don't, we haven't done that, and I'm not sure that we need to do that, because the use that we're making is not something where we're making food that's taken around and really sold to people, this is something that's done internally.
So, would you have any objection to a condition subject to Suffolk County Health Department approval?
There's one more.
Can you ask questions? Whoa, hold on one second. Go ahead, Mr. Cuddy.
To answer your question, I, when you say go to the health department, I'm not sure what we would be saying to the health department.
Well, a portion of the building is gonna be used as a commercial kitchen, because your cooking and baking in part, with the ability to supplement the food products in the restaurant next door.
Well, that's the question, if we're really doing that, or you think that that is?
Mr. Cuddy, if he, if he needs it, would you get it?
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm saying.
If he, if he needs it, yes, yes. That, that's not, that's, yes, that's not a problem.
No, but he's using it as a commercial kitchen, and in some small part, supplementing the restaurant. I don't think the issue, it's, it's not the use, it's whether or not that would trigger Suffolk County Health Department. That's all.
If we needed it, we'd get it.
Right, exactly. I mean, we're talking about a variance here. Excuse me. I think that would happen if it was necessary. I don't think we have to determine whether it's necessary.
No, that's why I said, to the extent necessary.
We agree to that, yes.
I'm not sure if we have people that are seeking to speak?
I don't know either.
All right. Kathy McGraw, what do you have to say? And first off, raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help the God?
Is she there?
Yo!
Are you there?
Kathy McGraw, are you there?
Let's move on.
There was somebody else.
Is anyone in the audience that wanna speak on this variance?
Is there anyone on Zoom that has to speak on this matter? Okay. I'm good.
Good. Ready?
Go.
I move that the appeal of Big D Inc., eight twelve West Main Street, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred dash one two four dash three dash thirteen, iconic river community PRC zoning for variance and for relief from Chapter three oh one two-two B, where residential structure can be used partially for a commercial baking kitchen as accessory to the existing Maple Tree barbecue. Space not open to the public, no indoor or outdoor dining, and no direct marking or sales, and limited to explement next-door restaurant, be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second. We have a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zeweski.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
And again, it's been a pleasure over the years.
Well, I have one more to go, too.
Okay, Mr. Cuddy, you're pushing your luck to nurse, thank you. Two for two, I don't know about that.
Appeal twenty twenty-three dash zero six two, Theodora Cohen, seven sixty-one and seven sixty-seven, East Main Street, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred dash one twenty-seven dash seven dash twenty-three point one and twenty-four point one, downtown center three, DC three zoning, proposed minor subdivision. Applicant requests variances and/or relief from Chapter three oh one dash one five one, where proposed front yard setback for Lot Three is twelve point six feet, minimum required is fifteen feet.
Theodora Cohen is with me tonight, she's the owner of this property. She went to make an application for a subdivision, and found out that one of the homes that, and the homes are already on this site, is two point four feet closer than it should be to the driveway. So, what she's asking this board for is a variance for that two point four feet. There's nothing that can be done, because the house can't be moved, and the driveway is in existence. It doesn't have any impact on the neighborhood, because the house is already there, doesn't have any environmental impact either, for the same reason, and she doesn't really have an alternative. She's going to get the subdivision, which was endorsed, by the way, by the planning board. She has to have a two point four foot variance, and again, it's not substantial. There's very little else that I can say, because it's just that kind of variance that there isn't any place else to go.
I don't think you have to say anything more, Mr. Cuddy. Anybody have any questions about this? Anybody on Zoom? Let's have a reading.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, with respect to Appeal number twenty twenty-three dash zero six two, I move that the appeal of Theodora Cohen, seven sixty-one and seven sixty-seven, East Main Street, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred dash one twenty-seven dash seven dash twenty-three point one and twenty-four point one, downtown center three, DC three zoning, for variances and/or relief from Chapter three oh one dash one fifty-one, where proposed front yard setback for Lot Three is twelve point six foot, minimum required is fifteen foot, be approved, subject to the approvals from the following: Fire Marshal, Suffolk County Health Department, Riverhead Sewer District, water availability letter or if so required by Water District, map and plan, together with payment of key monies and all costs for infrastructure improvements, New York State Department of Transportation, SECR, Planning Board of the Town of Riverhead, and recommended for consideration common driveway permit easements for rights of ingress and egress for all lots and emergency vehicles described by meets and bounds, in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gazillo.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zeweski.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
And again, I'll reiterate, Mr., it's been a pleasure.
Well, if I may, I know there's one more applicant, but I'll just take thirty seconds.
You got another one?
No, no, I mean, it's an applicant behind me, but I'm hopeful that I can have just these thirty seconds. I just want to say to you that it's been meaningful for everybody that appears before you because of the equitable treatment that you give them, you make the meetings meaningful, and you've been doing that for years, and I think the community has a special place for you because you serve them, and served all of us, and thank you for doing it.
Uh, Mr. Cuddy, thank you.
Twenty-eight years.
It's a special thing, I'm a graduate of the Patricia Tormay School, so I know.
Yes. Mrs. Tormay was a very educated person, and she held the line, that's for sure.
She never had a decision overturned in all of her career.
No, she told me.
I think I can say the same.
But thank you again.
Thank you, Mr., thank you for saying that.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, Erica Chris, happy holidays.
Appeal twenty twenty-three dash zero six three, Robert Crudup, seven West Fairview Avenue, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred dash seven dash two dash sixteen, Residence A forty, RB forty zoning, proposed one-story, single-family residence, applicant requests variances and/or relief from Chapter three oh one dash eleven, where proposed front yard setback is twenty feet, minimum required is fifty feet. Proposed rear yard setback is twenty-seven feet, minimum required is sixty feet, and proposed side yard is twenty-one point five feet, minimum required is twenty-five feet. I just want to state for the record, we did receive a correspondence in objection to this, to be put on the record.
God bless.
If you kindly raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth?
I'm an attorney, friend.
Nothing but the truth, so help the God.
I will, I do.
State your name and your address.
Michael A. Kimak, PO Box, ten forty-seven South Hole, New York. We have a vacant lot, which is on the corner intersection of Sound Shore Road and West Fairview Avenue. I don't know if you've got the survey, do you have, did I include these copies of the aerials within the...
Yes, yes.
We have them.
Okay. It's most helpful. It's a small lot, obviously, it's four point two four acres. With the zoning setbacks primarily, the only real place with which to access is it off West Fairview Avenue. It's a little bit narrower in there rather than coming off of Sound Shore Road with the driveway. If you look at the contours on the plan, you'll see that there's quite a drop-off from Sound Shore. Number one, it would not be the feasible way to go in, and also, it's dangerous because it doesn't have the sightlines on, on Sound Shore. West Fairview is the way with which to get to the property. Setting it, if you can look at the contours, it's, it's really at the only flat spot on that property, because it raises up towards Sound Shore, and it raises up on the backside of the property going west. It's a modest house, sixteen hundred and forty-nine square feet, including the back. It's a one-story, it's not high, and the size of it is in keeping with the other houses in the, in the area. It's going to have a, it's already got a system, I think the, if I remember correctly, the septic system's already been approved for that particular site. It, it would obviously have the water line coming in at that particular time, right off of West Fairview Avenue, and with, really, with the front yard setback being fifty and the backyard setback being sixty, they overlap, there isn't really much more you can do with those two. Once you set it on West Fairview, you've, you've got a hundred and ten feet between the two, and the lots only eighty-one feet wide at that particular point. It was a, I think they, they did a nice job, it's, it's, the house design is in keeping with the neighborhood, it's a saltbox type design, one story. The house next door, I think, is much more substantial. If you look at the aerials, I think you'll probably judge from it that most of the houses probably are somewhere within the same setback from the road as one would be, twenty to twenty-five feet, it's just the nature of the, of the lots, they're just small, and they're very narrow, so there really wasn't much you can do moving it back and forth. There really much, much more I can add to it, it's pretty... But we did try to balance between the, the side yard, I'm sorry, the front yard and the rear yard, although we couldn't push it back anymore, you can see, pushing it back, we're getting into that hill, essentially, trying to put it down on one story without raising it up too high.
Anybody on the Zoom?
Anyone on Zoom to be heard on this matter?
How about in the audience? How about in the audience?
Any questions from the board?
Yes, I'm here.
Hello, who are you? Sir?
Yes, my name is Tom Hughes. My wife and I, Kathy McGraw, we own a home, a cottage on North Walk, which is in the Fairview Beach community.
Just hold it, hold on, hold on. Raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
State your name and your address.
Tom Hughes, we have, my wife and I, a cottage at 24 North Walk, which is at the end of East Fairview Boulevard or East Fairview Street, whichever. West Fairview is the one directly to the west. And we've lived in, my wife's family was part of the Conklins, were part of the original founders of the Fairview Beach community. So we've been there for a long time, and as many residents along Sound Shore Road, we have had dealings with Mister Crudup over the years. And so I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. Number one, is this, is Mister Crudup building this home for his own residence? Is he building this structure to sell? Or is he planning to build this structure to then perhaps engage in short-term rentals, BRBO, Airbnb, because it is a very nice lot, as the attorney has said, but it is a much different structure. It's got three bedrooms, it's got a garage, it's got parking on Sound Shore Road, et cetera, and would be an attractive rental, short-term rental property, and it's a short walk down what we call the gully to the beach. And the Fairview Beach community is a relatively small cluster of homes, it's probably eight, maybe more, I haven't done a census. And the actual sound frontage is probably a quarter mile. And that sounds like a lot, but as, as you know, the seas are rising, so the amount of available beach for people to put umbrellas and spools, et cetera, is shrinking. And we can't have it become some kind of clubhouse or destination for people not resident in the Fairview Beach community. Those are my questions, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
I think it's a fair question. My understanding is that this house or the property is owned by the daughter of Mister Crudup, and it's going to be her intention, I believe, to construct it and be the residence thereof.
Young lady, if you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
State your name and your address.
My name's Julie Crudup.
No, 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 pull that microphone to you.
Sorry. My name's Julie Crudup, I live at 4650 Old Julian, Matituck, New York. My dad owns.
Give the microphone, girl.
Okay. My dad, I guess you could say, is the owner of the property, but I, he's building the house for me, and so that I have a place to live and I'm not in their house anymore. I'm 25, so that's what he's doing. So to answer those questions, it's for me.
Essentially, his question was, he planned to own it, sell it, or rent it?
I plan to own it.
Okay.
Yes.
End of story.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Any other questions, sir?
No, we welcome the young lady to our community.
Great, abba-dabba-do, there we go. Okay, anyone else to be heard on this matter? Nobody, let's have a reading.
I move that the appeal of Robert Crudup, 7 West Fairway Avenue, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-7-2-16. Residence A40, RA40 zoning, for variance and/or relief from Chapter 301-11, where proposed front yard setback is 20 feet, minimum required is 50 feet. Proposed rear yard setback is 27 feet, minimum required is 60 feet, and the proposed side yard is 21.5 feet, minimum required is 25 feet. Be granted, in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Gentlemen?
Second.
Second.
Second, okay, great, whatever. All right, Mister Gazillo.
Aye.
Mister Whitmire.
Aye.
Mister Zueski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, young lady, enjoy your spot, it's a great little spot, and best of luck.
Thanks, Dan.
Good night, Councilor.
Fred, may I also say that I'm not before you as much as Charles Cuddy is, but every time I have been here, you have been most consistent and most fair and most reasonable, and that's all anyone can ask before this board.
Thank you.
Enjoy, thank you very much.
We all try.
You certainly do more than that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Young lady, off you go.
That's it.
Wishing you all a great holiday and a healthy New Year, and all that good stuff.
That was the last one.
That was the last one? That was the last one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, where have I been?
That's where we've been wondering.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes for the last meeting?
Before, I just want to thank you for everything. And just, first of all, I've been, I'm one of the new members of the board, you helped me since I first came across, and I think you had to, and you're the only other Brooklyn I've ever met. You understood when I was talking, you're the only one who knows what I'm saying. Secondary, I think the town owes you a thanks for all the years of service. And we all in this country owes you a vote of thanks for your service overseas. For that, we thank you, and it's been a pleasure.
I gotta pull the handkerchief out, Jesus. Well, thank you, everyone.
We'll work on your hair, okay, I'll send you some notes.
Is that singular or plural here?
Some roots. All right, let's get serious. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to end this meeting, my very last?
So moved.
So moved.
As much as I hate to.
Thank you all.
Good night.
All right.
Holy Christmas, I said, I'm not gonna put a tear in there, but you, thanks, Ralph.
It's all right. Been a slice to have.
You're on mic.
The mics are still on? We don't care.
Larry, we love our job.
Except for the guy that runs the mics. Thank you all, it's been a pleasure. No, 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 stop.